...held on Wednesday, January 14, 2015. Will everybody in the audience please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Kelly.
Mr. Franti?
Here.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Here.
Mr. McGuire?
Here.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Here.
Ms. Wood Pruitt?
Present.
Ms. Ty?
Here.
Approval of minutes of the January 8, 2015 meeting.
Check it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a correction made for that.
Go ahead.
That it should read, "That we accept comma with regret comma the notice of retirement letter submitted by Dr. Paul Dakin comma and place it on file." I wanted to put in that we accept it with regret.
We need a vote on that.
Is there a second?
You need a second.
Second.
All favor, all oppose, so voted. Number three, superintendent's report. Superintendent Dakin.
The first item in the report is about a statement of interest that I would like to file on behalf of the city and...
And the city and the school. Sorry, I didn't have the mic on. A statement of interest, the School Building Assistance Bureau has a program that for accelerated repairs, and it's a grant program. And community, city, school departments can apply to this program when they have a repair that has to be made. Now, we know, and we have long known, with reports that we've got, even scanning reports of the Garfield roof, that that 25-year-old roof has to be replaced. It's met its age as far as warranties, guarantees, it's leaking like a sieve, and when we scanned the roof with high-technology devices, had a company in doing that, in hope that we could just repair spots, the damage is too extensive and calls for a complete new roof. That would end up being a couple of million-dollar job. Similarly, we had, two years ago now almost, storm damage to the exterior wall in the back of the Garfield. It was compromised during the storm, and that's another project. It's my thinking that both of these projects have to be done. We know, the city knows they have to be done. We're scratching our heads on how to get them done and how to get the funding. This program exists for accelerated repairs. It's a grant program, but before I could apply to that grant program, it calls for a vote of the school committee and the city council to apply for the grant. So I can do all of the work, but I can't do the work, and they won't accept the work that I do, explaining the problem with the roof and the problem with the exterior wall, unless there's a vote of the committee and the council. So I'm, you know, I'm here to, and it's obvious, it's a grant program, so we have to do these projects anyway, and it doesn't commit us or them to the fact, because we put it in, whether we'd get the grant. There's no commitment on their part, there's no commitment on our part. The only thing is, in order for me to apply and to do the work to apply, which is relatively extensive, they want a commitment, a vote of the committee instructing me to do that. So, you know, I would hope that we could get that done somehow.
Ms. Gravellisi.
I'd like to make motion. I'd like to motion to vote to authorize a superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated February 11, 2015, for the Garfield Community Magnet School, Garfield Elementary and Garfield Middle.
Second.
It's located at 176 Garfield Ave., which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. In the future, an application to the accelerated repair program for a new roof system and replacement of a structurally unsound exterior wall, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the city, town, regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mrs. Pruitt?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
I think that's a real wise move. There's money potentially there that we can capture that would help defray some of the costs of those two projects. Second point I want to talk about is the closing of schools during any weather situations. We had to call a cold day. Believe it or not, it's the third cold day I've had to call in my tenure. About eight to nine years ago, we had two cold days in a row. The days, you know, we, it's a tough, that's a really tough decision call. Some people were saying, "Why don't you go late?" And going late, sometimes kids don't get the notice, and they're out there waiting at bus stops anyway, and in a dangerous situation, the way things were. What was that, last?
Thursday.
Thursday. You know, you don't want that to happen. Even when we have a snow day or a cold day, kids arrive at schools anyway. So, and we were prepared for that on the cold day. We had people from the Transportation Department in, expecting that kids would show up, that we could get them home, and principals were taking care of that, and of course, it happened. So I would instruct folks, the best way to find out, the quickest way to find out is through the Twitter account, which is rps underscore super, and then it starts to spread quicker than even watching the local television stations that get the information up there quickly once we notify them. And they're notified simultaneous to, you know, to us sending the Twitter account, but it takes a while for them to get it logged in. And I think the word spreads, and we haven't had a problem like that before. Even when we push everything out, we know kids are going to end up showing up at school. It's just the nature of the beast. So we're ready for that, but the quickest way for folks to find out is certainly the Twitter account or, and then watching the regular Channel 5, Channel 7, Channel 4, where the information goes in very quickly.
Mr. Superintendent, Mr. McGuire, there's a question for you.
I was just curious, Paul, that we didn't do a robo-call for that. Is there a reason why? And some people complained to me that, why didn't he do that?
We didn't do a robo-call for any of the five snow days last year. Last year, we did not use the robo-call. And the main reason why, the year before, when we used the robo-call, it was flooded, if you can remember, it was put in at 5:30, and people didn't get a call until about 9:30 because the company we went to is not as, has not been as efficient in, when there's a high priority and everybody's using that kind of service, it sort of got jammed. I haven't tested it since on a snow day because if I'm relying on the phone, and the phone's going off at 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock in the morning, and the message is not out anyway. What we can do, though, is test it again. And when Chelsea's sending it, Everett's sending it, to see if this pipe is big enough to handle all of us, it's an extra, and we can do that. But I would like to get parents not to rely on that call because the service hasn't been reliable. When we buy those services, we have to put it out to bid, and we go to the lowest bidder, and sometimes the lowest bidder isn't the best producer of services.
Did we utilize the Revere School Channel, the government channels? Is that something we could do simultaneously with Twitter?
The government channel is tougher to access that remotely, but the webpage, it was up on the webpage quickly. So it gets the web, it hits the web, it hits Twitter, it hits the TV stations. And in all honesty, I, they're going to hit there quicker than they're going to hit the robo-call anyway. When the robo-call goes, even if we get priority, we're in line, it has to make 7,000 calls, and it's not like the first call's at the same time as the second call. People want it quickly, TV's the best because we get it there instantly. They'll see it there sooner than they would see, hear a robo-call.
Paul, I just have two quick ones. Number one is, it was on the Channel 5 app as soon as the announcement came out. So if you had that Channel 5 app, it came out. And second of all, do we still have the same company making the robo-calls, or do we go to somebody else?
No, we're in the same company because it's a three-year contract.
And what part?
I think this may be third year, and we, if they were the new bidder in the next round, we would eliminate them because we're not pleased with the service. We didn't want to go through some legal hoops in eliminating them during a contract.
Okay.
So, but there's another way. I mean, I think we have to realize that last year, even when we do the robo-call, we're going to have kids showing up at school, and people that don't know it. Last year, with five snow days, we really didn't get a call for people wanting the robo. I think here, though, when it's snowing out, people are in tune with the fact that there may not be school. Although if you watch Twitter, the kids were in tune that I was going to call a cold day, they certainly wanted it. But if, the freest flow of information is our webpage and the TV station, like I said, they're in the Twitter account are the quickest ways of doing it. And Dr. Kelly has a Twitter account, too, and we can have her start pushing it out as well.
Yes.
Any question, Ms. Pruitt?
Dr. Dakin, when we do use the robo-call, I'm sure there's a lot of numbers that are pushed back, that, you know, may have cellphone numbers, people don't have their cellphone or something like that. Is it something we go out again or look to go out again that that company would take care of?
Right now, we get, for every call that goes out, and the principals still use this, and when they use it, it sort of hits out because every district in the state's not jumping on using that pipe. So if somebody has a play, they'd still be sending something out to their particular school's clientele, and it works pretty efficiently. Anytime a call is made, we get a report back that tells how many people answered, how many answering machines were hit, how many bad numbers there are. When we get the bad numbers, we go into autopilot, tracking out who that bad number belongs to, and dig out that student and family so that we can get a correct phone number from them. So that work is all done behind the scenes, and it was, it's a part of this particular company, and it was part of the previous companies that we had doing this work as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Go to school.
Okay. Continue, Mr. Superintendent.
Next thing I've asked... I've asked Dr. Kelly to, you know, start to do some work on the middle school assignment plan, the evil word lottery, and she's already started to think out some of that bit, has talked to principals, and I'd turn it over and ask Dr. Kelly to give us an update on the middle school assignment plan.
Thank you, Dr. Dakin. So I did work a little bit with both the elementary and middle school principals over the last week, and what we're looking at is having the customary school tours take place the week after February vacation. Last year, we did them the week before, but with some other things that are going on in the district, the principals have decided that the week after would be better. So parents can look for permission slips to be coming home, probably two weeks before February vacation, in preparation for those tours to happen. We're working with the Transportation Department now to iron out a schedule for all of the kids to get around to each of the three middle schools. And the timeline that we're looking at right now is, the kids would take the tours, and then on that Friday after the tours end, the kids would take home the middle school choice form, which they would fill out in conjunction with their parents in order to determine which was their first, second, and third choice middle school. Once all the forms come back in and we're able to process them, we'll know better whether or not there's need for a lottery this year. As folks know, in the last several years, there has been need for a lottery. I, you know, we'll have to wait and see what the data shows this year. When we determine whether or not a lottery is needed, we will select a date. We're going to try to go for a Thursday night in March is what we're aiming for, and we'll have more information as soon as we know whether or not the lottery is necessary and select a date, then we'll get that information out to parents as quickly as possible.
Any questions for Dr. Kelly? Okay.
Okay. My final point is, you know, we have had a, some very good news in the past month or so. Just last week, actually this week it was, notice from the Nellie May Foundation that the district has been awarded a multi-year, multimillion-dollar grant to influence student-centered learning throughout the district. The grant, a grant like this is usually focused on the high school, but they want district change. So even though the high school is the focus of the grant, the professional development, the opportunity, and the funding is going to be there to transition learning across all grades in the district. This is really the biggest amount of money we've ever got in a foundation grant. So, and I have to give credit to the high school team who really developed this, and Dr. Garcia, who did a tremendous job. It stands to chance over a multi-year period, probably, you know, three and a half years with, you know, multimillions of dollars, to really transition learning to deeper levels using common core and using a flipped and blended learning approach, embedding technology into learning, with a lot of professional development for teachers. So that is, you know, one heck of a hit in the past month. Likewise, Garfield Elementary School was on the receiving end of a $20,000 grant that they received, and Garfield Middle School on a $10,000 grant. So, I mean, I don't think we've ever had a month where we've banged out this much money. And I've asked Principal Mokaba, Danielle Mokaba, to come to us and just give us a little background on the grant at the Garfield Middle School that she successfully put together.
Thank you. Thank you for the invitation, and I give all of the credit to our technology teachers. They really came to me and said, "This is an experience that we want for all of our students." They created a plan to expose all of our students to this, looking at our student schedules, looking at the week. And we were fortunate, we submitted this plan to code.org, and we were able, we were the Massachusetts School selected for the $10,000 Donors Choose grant. We had a great celebration. We were joined by many of you, the mayor, representatives from Microsoft, and Mass TLC Ed Foundation. And now we're at the phase where we are trying to determine how to spend that money. The money has to go to our technology program, and in meeting with the team, what they really wanted to do was look at how to expand our already strong technology program. So we, as you know, we have the one-to-one iPads in our eighth grade, and we have, all of our students have technology every year in sixth, seventh, and eighth. So we were looking to give more hands-on experiences. So some of the things that we're purchasing, we're looking at Lego Mindstorms to offer that sort of hands-on exposure. We're also looking at what's called a Raspberry Pi, which will give the students that hardware and networking experience, something that they can work with, with their hands. We're looking at a 3D printer. We have an amazing design program, so we're looking to expand that program so that kids can really see the hard product of some of the design and architecture and SketchUp work that they're doing. We're also looking at exploring, we're going to explore SnapCircuits to give that STEM feel to technology, and we're looking at where we want to expose kids to these different experiences. And our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade tech teachers have been really open-minded and forward-thinking about how we want to spend this money because it's not like another iPad will help us. We really wanted to look at expanding the technology program that we have and the enrichment classes that we can offer.
Any questions? Any questions with committee?
If I may.
Ms. Ty?
Will you, I understand the wisdom of not providing just another iPad for a different group, and I hope that many of those kids have their own iPads, too. So will you do this in the technology class alone, or will there be an attempt to pull in, say, an English teacher and a science teacher and do something in that, with that?
Where we plan to start that is the technology classes, but we, our technology teachers play two roles. They teach their traditional tech classes, but they also teach enrichment classes. So part of our challenge is to offer enrichment classes that students in the seventh and eighth grade in particular can select. So we're looking at, this year, we offered architecture, Minecraft, and several other design courses. So we're looking at what can we offer the students with these additional supports for next year.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Any other questions? All set. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. You're doing a fantastic job down at Garfield Middle.
All set, Superintendent?
I think at this point, we can move on to the Hill School approval of bills.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Sergeant, Staff Sergeant James J. Hill School, approval of bills for Hill School as recommended by the Building Subcommittee. Ms. Gravellisi.
Incumbrances, DRA PSS number 12, $59,950 for additional geotechnical and geo-environmental construction and administrative services. So moved.
Second.
Just a quick explanation, Paul, with the difference of the amounts were?
Yeah, this is, PSS 12, and you can see that it's starred an asterisk on the form. We had already voted PSS 12, and when the information was conveyed to us from Hill Associates, the clerk who reported it only reported the first number, which was 24,500, I think. And I think that's what we voted for this bill. Sitting behind that in the next sentence was another amount of money that added together brought the total bill to 59,950. Down the bottom of the particular invoice was the total amount. So it was a clerical error. We had approved a sub-portion of this. All the work has been done. Mr. McGuire and Mr. Redden and the bill payment Subcommittee got this explanation in detail from Simon Tempest and Kate, and were extremely comfortable knowing that the, this was a figure that was written wrong, and it just has to be corrected. So this is a correction for additional geotech and geo-environmental construction administration costs.
So, Paul, they originally got paid the 24,000. They originally got paid the 24,000, so we're only approving the difference?
No, the payment hasn't gone yet. It hasn't even moved off to City Hall, so this vote will be in time to do it all correct.
Okay. Roll call, Dr. Kelly.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Next.
Invoices, CTA Construction Base, $1,460,266.20. Requisition number 11 for December services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Next.
CTA Construction CO. number 1, $10,434.80. Requisition number 11 for December services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Next.
DRA Basic Services, $37,513. Invoice number 12012 for December services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Next.
DRA PSS number 7, $1,296. Invoice number 1201207, December services.
Second.
All of the favor, all of the opposed, so voted. Next.
DRA PSS number 11, $935. Invoice number 1201211, December services. So moved.
Second.
All of the favor, all of the opposed, so voted. Next.
DRA PSS number 12, $49,089.57. Invoice number 1201212, services through December. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Next.
DRA PSS number 13, $569.80. Invoice number 1201213, December services. So moved.
Second.
All of the favor, all of the opposed, so voted. That's it for the incumbences and invoices. Next on the agenda is the Subcommittee Reports with the Ways and Means on the paraprofessional contract ratification. We had a meeting with the Ways and Means and the committee as a whole prior to this. We have the contract in front of us. It shows a moderate increase on the daily rate. The longevity, they've got a nice little raise on it. At this point, I believe we do need a vote to ratify the contract.
I move to ratify the memorandum of understanding to be executed into a contract between the Revere School Committee and the Paraprofessionals Union.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Not voting.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
At this point, I would like to call Ms. Pruitt for a report on the Shore Collaborative.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Franti. Last night was the Shore Collaborative. I just want to give a basic update. I will put their folder in the school committee file that we have in the main office. We now have 30 children enrolled in Shore Collaborative, and right at this time, our finances are completely paid off, and we're equal with them. I just want people to know, Shore does do a lot of home teaching for parents who have special needs children in the city, and I just want them to know the cost of it. This, in the last few months, it's been $53,000 to train parents how to handle and work with their special needs child. So I just want people to be out there and realize that it's just not, you know, our kids go to Shore and then come home. We are training parents constantly, and that is it, Mr. Franti.
Thank you, Ms. Pruitt. Do we need a roll call? Okay. Any questions for Ms. Pruitt?
If I could add one observation.
All right, Ms. Ty.
They have been, not only do they go to the parents and help, but they actually work when the kids come back with our teachers to help them with it, too. So it's a both home and school connection. And by the way, thank you very much for going to those meetings. My pleasure. I enjoy it.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is school department communications. I don't see any. Next. New business, communications from Matt Cruz regarding requests for proposals for food service management. Ms. Gravellisi.
To Dr. Dakin from Matt Cruz, January 1, 2015. Please request that the school committee approve the school department's initiation of the request for proposals with the city of Revere purchasing agent at the next scheduled school committee meeting for a food service management company for FY '16, the 2015-2016 school year, with two possible extensions for FY '17 and FY '18, the 2016-2017 and the 2017-2018 school years. Thank you.
Any questions? No.
So moved.
All right. Thank you.
I think we need a roll call.
All right, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
I'm so moved. So happy to be here.
Okay, next on the agenda is Late Communications. I don't see any.
Um, yes.
I don't, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Gravellisi.
To Dr. Paul Dakin from Angela Prizio regarding Verizon. Please have the school committee.
Sorry. Please have the school committee formally recognize and approve the receipt of the attached grant from Verizon in FY '15. The funds will be deposited in our school donations revolving account in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 37A. Expenditure and progress reporting will be managed by Patricia DiGregorio, Garfield Middle School Principal. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?